Can I have your attention? We're going to take things a little out of order because we still have people coming in, so if I could ask everybody to stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, in this world, where we stand, one nation under our own individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask our new Town Administrator, Allison Nieto, and Chief Austin Antrim to come up to the podium.
Thank you for coming out tonight, and I know a lot are still trying to make their way in, which is why we are going to do these awards at the beginning. So I have something to say, and then Chief Antrim has something to say. On August 23rd of this year, a group of young gentlemen were swimming at Short Beach, enjoying the large waves. We had just had a hurricane. At this time, the surf was very strong and the waves were big. Two of the young men noticed longtime resident Chris Miletty in distress and immediately sprung into action. They swam out to Chris and worked together to bring him to shore. The two signaled to their friends to call for help, and they all waited until medical help arrived. In their efforts, these young men displayed maturity and bravery well beyond their years, and the Town Hall wants to recognize them. So I'm going to call each out one at a time, and I'd like them... And what I'm presenting to them is a citation from the House of Representatives and one from the Senate. The representative and the senator couldn't be here today, they're in session, but they sent these along, and they're very meaningful, and I hope you find them to be very special. So if Freddie Fiori could come up... Ethan Kent... James Marsh... Herbie Dwayne... Jake O'Connor... And Peter Demetrikopoulos. I hope everyone knows that word. I just want to say that I'm proud of you and your courage, and I hope that you continue to lead by example. So now Chief Antrim's going to come up, he has something to say.
If I could have the other firefighters come up and join me here, and Chief Furlong as So I know everybody's eager to start arguing with each other, so I'll try and keep this Saturday, August 23rd, 2025, was a beautiful day. The sun was shining, temperatures climbed into the low eighties, and a steady breeze was blowing. Since this was one of the last weekends of the summer season, many people planned to enjoy a day at the beach or along the coast. The Nahant American Legion was holding their antique car show at the Nahant Life Saving Station. Meanwhile, the remnants of Hurricane Erin was making its way north in the Atlantic. Aside from Hurricane Sandy in 2012, no other hurricane as large as Erin had come as close to the U.S. East Coast since 1966. The swells from Hurricane Erin were steadily battering a large swath of the East Coast, prompting high-surf advisories and riptide warnings. Despite the danger, the nice weather drew many people to the water in the beaches and the rocks along the coast. This group of boys were no exception. They were having a fun day at Short Beach. As Allison said, a couple of them were swimming and saw something in the water. They realized it was a person face down. They called out, but did not get a response. Although they were nervous, they approached the person and tried to ask if he was okay as they began to roll him onto his back. Realizing something was very wrong, they began pulling him towards shore and called their other friends for help and to call for help. The other boys sprung into action, all working together to try and remove him from danger and from the water. One of the boys called 911 and then joined the others, removing the victim from the water. Several things struck me when I heard what had happened. From being in emergency services, I think any of us could constantly say that most adults don't respond as well as these boys did when faced with an emergency like that. I was not only impressed at the action they took, but with the manner in which they took it. It's irrelevant really who did what. What is most impressive is how they worked together as a team. These boys are faced with a life and death situation. They overcame their fears, they took action, and they made sure more help was on the way. That is extraordinary for kids at their age, and it's why I have the honor of presenting them each with the Medal of Valor. The Medal of Valor is typically reserved for public safety officers who go above and beyond the call of duty regardless of their own safety. The seal in the center of this Medal of Valor contains symbols associated with water rescue, a pair of crossed Oars, a lifeguard's rescue can, and a rescue life ring. This award is recognizing your heroic efforts to try and save someone's life while faced with dangerous conditions. I did not know Chris Miletty well, although we often passed each other riding bikes or out walking. He would always greet me with a wave and a smile. And from speaking with Chris's friends and his family, I heard a lot of stories of the things Chris would do for others, going out of his way just to help someone or to put a smile on their face. So to you boys, receipt of this award does not mean that you deserve special treatment. Rather, I hope it serves as a reminder that sometimes you need to put your own interests aside to help someone else in need, and a reminder to live life like Chris did. So before I hand out the medals, I'll read the certificate that goes along with them. The Nahant Fire Department Medal of Honor. This award is presented to Peter Demetrikopoulos for exhibiting exceptional courage, extraordinary decisiveness, and presence of mind along with swiftness of action regardless of personnel safety in an attempt to save human life. Valorous action took place on August 23rd, 2025, at Short Beach in Nahant, given this date of 19th November, 2025. Peter? Herbie? Freddie Fiori? Ethan Kent? James Marsh? Last but not least, Jake O'Connor? Thank you. Round of applause for these kids.
Seeing that we have 75 members in the hall, I'd like to open this meeting. At this time, I'd like to have the clerk read the call of the meeting.
Thank you. This is the constable's return of service that we are required to post in four different areas. On the date written above, which was 11/3/25, I have served this warrant by posting attested printed copies thereof at the Town Hall and such other places the selectmen deem appropriate, but not less than three in each precinct, being the Nahant Police Station, Nahant Fire Station, and the Nahant Public Library. It is signed by Town and Nahant Police Jason Hoffman.
All right. If you have not registered and gotten into the hall, please make sure you register. We need to make sure that you register so that we have the right count for votes. Now, I'd like to read off a list of people who are non-voters that are in the hall. Allison Nieto, Zachary Taylor, Robin Stein, Chief Tim Furlong, Nels Nelson, Rob LeBeau, Zachary Laird, Scott Greaves, Pedro Diaz, I think the family's left, so Armando Cole, Mr. Dina Tally, Lauren Dina Tally, Tim Johnson, and Casa Fauci, and also Lorenzo Aquilio. Yeah, if anyone has a seat next to them, put your hand up, and maybe some others can sit down. We still have people out in the back. There's seats up top. People can go up to the balcony?
No.
No? Okay, sorry.[811.44][811.44](Laughter) All right, electronic voting.
So, as most of you may already know, there is no internet service. It's down. This is Allison's introduction to being the new Town Administrator. So everybody that starts working here has a catastrophe happen on their first big job. So we're going to put... That went... We're going to put the slides up that are important. We don't have the clickers, so when it comes time to vote, you will have to be inside of the meeting hall here to be able to vote. It's a majority vote, it's not a two-thirds vote, and if it need be, then we will have to do paper ballot votes, okay? But we'll decide that. That will be between Peter and myself at the time of the vote. Okay? So we're going to get started.
Yeah, just a quick thing, quick history. Last Saturday, I went to the Mass Moderators Association's annual meeting. I learned a couple of things about town meeting. One, the first recorded town meeting took place on the Mayflower in Plymouth Harbor in 1620. There are currently, actually I should say, yeah, there are currently six states in New England. We are the only people who have open town meeting or representative town meeting. Nowhere else in the country, nowhere else in the world. And lastly, unfortunately, they did a study 25, the past 25 years in Massachusetts. The average representation at town meeting is 4.7% of voters. Happy to say, thank you all for coming. We have way more than 4.7%. And with that, we'll move to Article One, Mr. Vandislice.
I move that Nahant add a new section, Section 16, Multifamily Overlay District, to its existing zoning bylaw as printed in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee on Pages 7 to 13.
I second...
Seconded by Ms. Beatty?
I second the motion.
Yep. You want to speak?
All right. So, good evening, and thank you for coming. We, the Finance Committee, we recognize that this is a zoning article, or two zoning articles, and it's all about zoning and it's about social impact. But that's going to happen shortly. Before we start that, just a few words about the financial impact of these zoning articles. And a bunch of people are probably saying, "Wait, what are you talking about? They're using zoning articles, there is no financial impact to them." Unfortunately, there is. If Nahant is noncompliant with Section 3A of the state laws, meaning we vote "no" on these articles, there is a price tag to that. There is a price tag to voting "no" tonight. The Finance Committee, we recommend these articles. We think that this is a very practical solution that will avoid the financial consequences that the state will impose if we don't comply with Section 3A. The state has said, and in fact is, withholding grant funds from municipalities that don't comply with Section 3A. In addition, they're also taking action against those municipalities that don't comply with 3A. These are not idle threats. Just very recently, the state revoked a $1.2 million grant from our neighbors across the bay, Winthrop. We are seeing on state grant applications, a new question has appeared, asking whether the town is in compliance with Section 3A. Some local facts and figures. Over the last five years, Nahant has received each year somewhere between a million and a million seven in-state grants. That is at significant risk with a no vote this evening. The way we would see it is, think a project may cost more because we are not getting state reimbursement, or we just won't be able to do the thing because it's just too much money. So, you know, no matter how you cut it, a no vote tonight, the Town of Nahant will be poorer for it. So what we suggest is, there will be speakers, I strongly suspect there will be speakers that stand up and urge a no vote, just in the back of your head. When they finish speaking, ask yourself, have they addressed the revenue gap that will occur should the nays prevail? So now we move on to the zoning and social impact discussion.
Ms. Hamilton and Ms. Steinberg?
So, I'm Sheila Hamilton, Chairman of the Planning Board. Thank you. It's a very nice sight to see so many people at this special town meeting. This is a very special... Two articles that need to be voted on this evening. I just want to say I have a great team of Planning Board members, and one who's right here with me. Robert Steinberg is Vice Chair. We have Ann Marie Grady, who is our Secretary. Casey Carey is our Treasurer. And then we have members Tom Hamilton, Michael Cullenin, Steve Viviano, and then we also have Jeff Lewis as an alternate. And just so you do know, there is an opening as an alternate, and if you are interested in helping serving on the Planning Board, you can contact Kristen Taylor and put your name in, and hopefully it'll all come, and you could get voted in to serve on the Planning Board. We also have someone here very important to us as another team member is Nels Nelson from Community Scale, who really has been instrumental in helping us, guide us through preparing for the zoning bylaw and the mapping. I just want to say that I have been active on the board here for over 30 years, and I am currently and have grew up in the house I am living in, in the Bass Point area, and I have seen a lot of things occur. And as much as I wouldn't want to see any changes, I don't think it will, and I think the district for the multifamily overlay district that we have selected is the best choice for now for the Town of Nahant. So we had been working, as you know, for the past five years on various other bylaws. We've had the marijuana bylaw, short-term rental bylaw, accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and now we have our zoning bylaw, the 3A MBTA, Multifamily Overlay District zoning bylaw. I want to present now our Vice Chair, Robert Steinberg, who will take you through the steps of where we began, where we were in the middle, and how we got to where we are. So here is Rob Steinberg.
All right. Thank you, Sheila. I know there's a lot of confusion about 3A, what it is, how the Planning Board made its determination, and what the impacts are, and I'd like to address that. And when, it'll probably be five to eight minutes, I'll speak, and then we'll be happy to take questions because we really want to clear up the confusion that is out there. So Section 3A, what it requires is that the town add to its multifamily zoning. Nahant has no multifamily zoning, and we went to the state and we said, "We should really be exempt from this." The state said, "You're not exempt. No town or city is going to be exempt, but you only need 84 units," which made this a lot easier than it might have otherwise been. We started working in the summer of 2025. We held well over 10 hearings. We met every single week. The public participated, the public commented, and we had a public hearing, formal public hearing, in September where we took comments and presented what we did and why we did it. We adopted a very methodical approach to this. We actually developed a rating system. We selected seven sites to study as potential sites. Our consultant, Nels, said the obvious site was Bass Point. We said we wanted to do it... He didn't say, "Don't review other sites." But we went into it, and he said it's the obvious site because we get credit for what we already have. It is where our multifamily is, and all we have to do is say, "This is a multifamily overlay zone, so if a developer ever comes in there," you know, "we would tear down the 84 and put 84 more..." Not "we," but the developer, if there ever was one who wanted to do it, and it's not clear there would be, they would just replace those 84. So we're actually complying by adding no more multifamily units. Now, maybe there should be more multifamily units in Nahant, but in terms of a larger project, it was most efficacious to do it in one spot. So the sites were East Point Neighborhood at the top of Willow Road, the area south of Nahant Road between summer and winter, the Nahant Country Club, the Range Road Bayside Area, the Nahant Corridor, Nahant Road Corridor between the bank and the beach, the Nahant Business District, and Bass Point. We weighted certain criteria, we had 11 criteria. We weighted certain criteria as critical, and they received double the score of other criteria. Those criteria were feasibility of development, aesthetics and compatibility with specific neighborhoods, impact on open space and recreation. We also looked at equity, town acceptance, impact on traffic and infrastructure, proximity to the bus stop, and flood risk. And overall, we wanted to have a least disruptive solution that would be accepted by the state, and height restrictions such as our 30-foot height restriction would apply, and other zoning restrictions in our zoning bylaws would apply. So that's how we looked at it. Bass Point was rated the top site and received the highest score. Very close behind or equal to it was the Nahant Corridor between the bank and the beach, but that's a very small site, and we were advised by Nels that we could meet the requirements of 3A by just selecting one site. So we selected the highest rated site, Bass Point. What made Bass Point compelling was it only has one owner, the fewest owners of any of the sites, minimal or no effect on aesthetics, open space, or recreation. We're just getting credit for what we already have in terms of multifamily units. Bass Point is already multifamily, so there'd be no effective change. So what we're proposing is that if there is a development there, they get 84 units as of right. If they want more, they need a special permit. For the 84 units, they need 10% affordable housing. For the 128 units, they need 25% affordable housing, and they have to operate within the height limit in Nahant. So we thought that was the best way to go. Now, you might be going, "Oh, affordability, what does that mean?" What that means is that the current residents of Bass Point, many of them, most of them, are probably qualified for affordable housing because they are the average income in Nahant. So we would force the developer to have affordable housing so at least some of the people or people like them could still live in Nahant. So that's why we added that affordability criteria. So Bass Point is, you know, it seemed far and away the best site to us, and that's what we're supposed to do as Planning Board members. The Finance Committee unanimously agreed with us, of the people who voted, and the selectmen unanimously agreed with us, and we unanimously voted for it. We also unanimously voted that the site is a eligible location, which is the second determination the Planning Board had to make under the law. I want to emphasize that in the event there is any new development at Bass Point, and we don't know that there will be or when it might occur, it is a very... I would say that various experts have taken the position that Nahant is a very difficult place to have a large multifamily development, and that's because costs of land, lack of amenities. There haven't been any, and there certainly has been opportunity for some, but it just hasn't occurred. We don't know that the Bass Point... We don't know that the Bass Point owner is going to sell. There's been no indication he wants to sell. He has been refurbishing the apartment, to my knowledge. I haven't encountered anybody who does know of any developer who wants to come in here. What we are doing is zoning. Zoning is permission. It's not a mandate. All it means is that there is a permission to build multifamily on that site if and when that might ever happen. So it's not like there's an imminent threat, some developer is going to come in and do it. So there is an imminent threat, though. And Bob outlined some of those threats. But I'd like to be more specific. So when he says Nahant would be ineligible for grants, and we typically get between $1 million and $1.7 million of grants a year on a very small budget. I don't know how big the budget is. Maybe it's 16, 70 million. But there's not a lot of room on that, given our tax base. So if we are denied grants, these critical grants, the Finance Committee has a big, big problem. And they're not being real specific, but it's where are we going to get the revenue to do what we need to do? A lot of the grants we want to get are not things that are optional. For example, we would be blacklisted from water, sewer, and stormwater upgrades. We all know that that was, that maintenance will be needed. Road construction and sidewalk upgrades. There's no probability that won't be needed. Building upgrades, seawall and flood mitigation. Obviously, we'll be needing flood mitigation. Nahant's planning to spend, to apply for obviously well over $1 million of grants. And I cannot overstate enough what a huge problem losing all or many of these grants for the town will be. And I think every member of the Finance Committee would agree with that. The state announced this week that starting in January, it will go after towns that are not compliant by December 31, 2025. And the state has contacted our attorney several times to see how we're doing. So those who claim that if we vote no, the state won't care and there'll be no financial repercussions are totally wrong. I can't emphasize enough how wrong they are. Some of you may be afraid that you're going to be kicked out of your apartment. And the Planning Board's very sympathetic to that concern. Your fellow residents of the Nahant, we don't want that to happen to anybody. We don't know, there's no developer coming in in the foreseeable future or has the Bass Point owner expressed a desire to tear it down and do something different. So for the foreseeable future, we know of no possibility of those apartment dwellers being affected. I can't say, I can't guarantee that at some point in the future, they won't be. It's just nobody knows of anything. And no developer has shown an interest in coming to Nahant for a multifamily development. In fact, the, as I understand, the Bass Point owner is refurbishing the apartments. Again, we're sympathetic to the residents of Bass Point. But, you know, one additional point, and that is, there's nothing stopping the owner from tearing it down. There's nothing, there's nothing in the way of him exorbitantly raising rents. I understand he already has. So, so the renters aren't in control of that owner. Town of Hot is not in control of that owner. And even if we vote no, what's going to happen is the state's going to go after us big time. Of the 34 small communities in Nahant, there are only two who haven't complied. Carver and Nahant. So we're a very obvious target. What did I say? Carver and Nahant?
Carver and Nahant, Winthrop and Marblehead.
No, those are not small communities. They weren't listed as small communities. There are, there are a group of small communities. And for example, Marblehead is voting again for the fourth time on what they're going to do because the state is coming down on them. None of us like having the state tell us what to do. But in this case, voting no puts us at great financial risk. Voting yes to the proposed overlay district does not mean Bass Point will be torn down. It does not, and what it actually does is voting yes stops more multifamily units at Bass Point under 3A. So I'm happy to take any questions. Nels is here and he's happy to assist to the extent I don't have the answer. Sheila's also available to answer any questions. But we really want to clear up the confusion because if there's a no vote tonight, it is a big problem for this community. And again, I'm sympathetic to the Nahant renters at Bass Point. But we know of no imminent threat or anything foreseeable right now that could affect you. So any questions?
I'm going to open the floor up to basic questions first. If anybody has any clarification questions. Yeah, please come up to the microphone. State your name and address, please.
Patricia, 15 Breezy Hill Terrace, Nahant, Nels. My question is that you're referring to the fact that the property, the Seabreeze Realty Trust, is in compliance with multifamily under this 3B. It is not in compliance, nor is some of the verbiage in here in compliance with 3B. 3B is supposed to provide housing for families. The property that's called Bass Point Apartments currently is one-day remuneration. So that in and of itself doesn't comply. So to say you're approving, complying with this particular provision is not, in fact, correct. This is a by, this, what I want to understand is, this is a by right proposal and not a discretionary. Discretionary is when you build property or you want to build property, you come to boards, you come to Planning Board, you come to the Conservation Commission. You have to get approval from the neighbors on what you do. If we do this in a five-acre location, this also opens us up to the fact that we're not in compliance with 40B.
I want to, I want to keep you in line with questioning only. I'm going to open up debate after the questions are answered.
Let me answer your questions. Okay, so we received numerous comments similar to yours about Bass Point isn't in compliance. One point you made is what we're proposing is an overlay district. It doesn't affect current zoning. If Bass Point ever decided to, it wanted to expand or add the 84 units, the overlay district would be triggered. Okay, so what is, what's happening right now in Bass Point in terms of compliance or non-compliance is not relevant to what we're doing under 3A. It just isn't. But I appreciate you're making that comment. We checked them out. We also have worked collaboratively with the state. They have pre-approved our plan. So what is by right is only the 84 units and the 10% affordable units. That's all that's by right. So we are actually reducing the number of units by doing so and creating less disruption than might otherwise be there. And the new units can be constructed in a way in the five acres where they're fully compliant with state law. And the state has granted us preliminary approval for what we've done. So we are copacetic on the law. I feel very confident of that. They will have to give us final approval. But all indications we're getting right now is what we've proposed is fully consistent with law.
The problem being is you are still open to that owner saying he wants to put up high rises.
No, no. Because there's a 30, well, if you consider a 30-foot building a high rise, that's part of the reason it's unlikely to be developed. There's a 30-foot height limitation in our proposal tonight.
There's not a 30-foot height limit if you're out of compliance with affordable housing.
We're not dealing with affordable housing tonight.
It doesn't matter. The town's open for.
It has been, right? And how many developers have come in and made proposals and tried to develop? Zero.
Well, the rents keep going up in Bass Point Apartments because they're pushing, they're pushing the tenants out for some reason. Now, obviously, Pasquale Franchi, who actually got a special permit to put housing, that amount of units across the whole five acres, came in and he put it in 25% of the land and left 75% available for something. So it was always an intent for this to be more housing regardless. But the 3B says this is supposed to be for families, not multifamily. Multifamily doesn't. It's in 3B. I've read all the terms on it.
Do we haven't, again, I don't want to get into debate yet. I'm waiting, I want to finish up with questions.
Let me answer, let me, okay. Okay, so let me answer your question. We are talking about 3A. So, Nels, why don't you go ahead? You have a comment on that?
Oh, sure. This is a great crowd. I'm Nels Nelson, consultant. I helped to write the zoning and we've worked with several other communities in the past couple of years to become compliant. So under 3A, you need to have a district with capacity for multifamily. It's not a requirement to have that multifamily. And when you have the capacity, in that capacity, you cannot restrict it down to non-family units. You can't say, we're only going to have studios. It has to be open. And so that's the capacity. We're creating the opportunity for capacity here. It has nothing to do with what's on the site right now.
Okay, but just so, but there's verbiage in here that kind of negates the idea of putting families in this housing. And that, what I saw in the, in the write-up under the MBTA communities suggests that it's supposed to be available for families. It's not supposed to be restricted. So that it's not just, multifamily just means different units. This is supposed to have the option of family housing. And I don't, I think there's a line in here that, but again, that's debate over line by line. I'm very concerned, but I just wanted to make sure we're doing something. We're basically risking another fire in Bass Point. We lost hundreds and hundreds of houses years ago, 100 years ago, because you can't put a fire out in Bass Point because the ocean winds are too strong over there. And it's the same that happened down in Situate, where you catch those waterfront properties on fire in those kind of positions. You've got, never mind the $1 million you might lose. It's going to cost you $1 million to upgrade the fire department services, hydrants, equipment. So I just want to make sure, if you're doing it, make sure you do it right.
Okay, thank you. Just to be totally clear, there's no, nothing in the zoning that would prevent family housing. And there's not allowed to be, and there isn't. And there are dimensional standards, which are the same as the underlying dimensional standards, the 30-foot height limit. That's in the zoning as well.
Thank you for your question.
Jody Graul, 65A, Bass Point Road. I have a question regarding the language in the article, in the proposed zoning change. And it's Section 16.8.2 and 16.9.1 references, quote, "mixed-use developments or projects." My question is, will adoption of this article create a mixed-use district?
The answer to that's no, because when you calculate the numbers out, so we got, you know, the 5.27 acres and we allow a maximum of 16 units per acre, there's absolutely zero room for mixed use. And if it came to the Planning Board.
Apples and oranges. It mentions mixed-use projects. It mentions mixed-use developments. Mixed use, I believe, has a specific zoning meaning. One application is retail stores on the lower level, housing on, you know, the second and third levels. So either it means something or it doesn't mean anything. If it doesn't mean anything, it should be deleted from the article.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, thank you for that comment. The, I would point people to Section 16.4, which is permitted uses. And the only permitted use allowed in the overlay is multifamily housing. So no commercial would be allowed.
So you would delete mixed uses in Article 16.8.2 and 16.9.1 to avoid confusion? If it talks about mixed-use projects, mixed-use developments, either Nahant is going to have that wherever this multifamily district ends up, or it's not.
Yeah, thank you, sir. That could be struck.
Yeah. Jody, thank you for your comment. You did, you did find an error. So we will, we will, as I said, when you look at the acreage, we're just right up against it. So, you know, five acres is not a large site for 84. But you're right, and we will strike it. If somebody, if somebody moves to strike, I, I would support that. And I think Sheila would as well. Thank you. Next question?
Excuse me. I think we have to make an amendment to.
Yeah, well.
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment? To the, Jody, if you could break that down.
Hold on. I have forms for that.
Would you do it?
Would you do it?
I would rather the Planning Board do it because I think there may be a third spot in that article where mixed use is also mentioned. So you have it on a computer, search for mixed uses, press delete. You do it. Oh.
Somebody should go and. Okay, thank you. Next, next question?
Susan McGuire, 39 Breezy Hill Terrace. I'd like some clarification on page 21, number five. Did the Planning Board conduct a traffic study on impacts on Bass Point? And the last sentence says, since the Planning Board proposal will likely lessen traffic and worst case will remain current traffic levels, a traffic study was not deemed necessary. And I'm wondering, let's just say there are 50 units put down at Bass Point.
Say there are what again?
Excuse me?
I, I didn't hear your last point.
I said.
Let's assume what?
I'm reading the.
No, no, you said, let's assume that.
Let's assume that there are 50 units going to be put in down there, okay? How can that, I just want to know the reasoning behind writing that it will likely lessen traffic and worst case will maintain current traffic levels.
Okay.
Thank you.
So typically, traffic studies are done by the developer who is proposing the development. We don't know what that developer will propose. And it would be extraordinarily difficult to do a traffic study when you have no idea what's going to be built. I'll answer your questions, sweet.
I, I think that maybe there's a little bit of clarification. Right now, under the overlay zoning.
Right now, under the overlay zoning, they wouldn't be allowed to add any housing because there's a cap of 84 units. Right now, there are 128 units there right now. If they wanted to build anything. Right.
We're not into debate, we're answering questions.
Okay, so, so there's 84 units as a variety. It's capped at 128 units. There's currently 128 units, which would be replaced. If development ever occurs, I'm not saying it will, but if, and when it ever does, it would max out at 128. So, the point is, they're single-family. If it, if some of these are two-bedroom, three-bedroom, it may add 20 cars, you know, if you have two or three bedrooms. Right now, in a lot of single families, you've got two people with two cars, there's a lot of parking lots at Bass Point. And it might add 20 or 30 cars to that area. I, I don't think that's, it's the same number of units. I know, but I live, I live.
If you're going to, you need to wait for debate. You can't be shouting from your seat, you need to get up to the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, it, it's logic would dictate if you've got max 128 units, and right now you have 128 units, and there are many married couples probably in those, I'm just speculating. Many married people, we, we don't know what the units are going to be like, we don't know the number of cars. What if it was 50? It'd be like, you know, two extra cars an hour, you know, at a stop sign. And I don't, I mean, you tell me what it's going to be. Is it going to be a traffic jam there? I don't think so.
There's a lot of cars because of what's going on there.
There is many, many vehicles, and it's dangerous.
I know there's a lot of vehicles, there's a lot of parked cars.
Why didn't you do a traffic survey then?
Because it's not possible to do a traffic study, because we don't know what it is.
And you guys just don't do them.
Okay.
Anyway, that's not my question.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, so I'm Kerry Collins, 22 Breezy Hill Terrace. I hear a lot about, "You have to vote for this, you have to vote for this space." I've actually said this at the planning board's meetings. Do you have a plan B? Because aren't you going to maybe try to pick the second spot if everyone here doesn't want it there? And maybe you should come to Bass Point because the traffic is crazy here because of the new, the new constructions. And I think everyone knows that. And again, the day that a family has one car is over. My family has four cars, but I'm lucky enough to have enough parking for it. But I want to know, what's your plan B?
So what the planning board was asked to do was come up with a proposal for compliance. Planning board members are elected, and part of our responsibility was to look at possible sites and pick what we believe is the optimal site. So, we picked Bass Point because we get credit for what's already there, so it's least disruptive. We'll be at the same density, so traffic, there may be some incremental increase because the units may be bigger, likely would be bigger, but it's not, in my opinion, significant, I think in any reasonable person's view, significant. But if you want to say it's going to be, you know, this huge number of people, like more than three cars an hour would be different going on Castle Road, going to Castle Road, that's what it probably would be, worst case. Yeah, so, so I, you know, that's what we were asked to do. We weren't asked to, you know, let's, we're presenting two options tonight. We were asked to make a decision. We worked very hard to make the best decision we could make. We think we made a good decision, and that's what we're supposed to do, and that's my answer.
Daniel Berman, 44 Spring Road. I, I don't have an actual question, but I don't want to interrupt debate, pointing out a technical flaw in the drafting. As I read the stormwater management provision in proposed bylaw, section 16.7.2I, it actually doesn't impose any kind of a requirement because it fails to include a verb. And I would suggest that where it begins, "strategies that demonstrate compliance," if you add in three little words, "strategies shall be implemented that demonstrate compliance," I think you would have a functional paragraph.
Okay, I appreciate the comment. A lot of this language came from the template that EOHLC provides communities for the overlay. And so this language has been vetted by the state and also passed their pre-approval. I, I understand your concern, but I think this would hold water, given who authored it, being the state.
Notwithstanding, notwithstanding that it's a legal nullity.
Yeah.
Okay.
What section were you talking about?
Go ahead.
My name is Gene Yockers, I live at 160 Bass Point Road. My question is, could you talk a little bit more about the feasibility study that you've done? If we do this, you say if, I said when, I think down the road, it will happen. Because we're being forced, we're basically being forced to do it. You say we're just going to create that zone. I understand that. What about the disruption of 128 people who live there? And we talked about traffic. How much traffic is that going to create? We're already dealing with traffic in the construction where the military housing was. I'm not opposed to this, and I think we should comply somehow, but someone else asked about using a different area. Is it conceivable that those other areas are more feasible? And it's not going to disrupt 128 people. A lot of the people are sitting here. And my question is, did the management company at Bass Point discuss this with their residents? Granted, it's not going to, you say it's not going to happen? It may happen?
No, it, it may happen, there's no, there's no doubt about it.
You say it may happen, but I believe it will happen because we're being forced to do it. You even said that, you used those words, "The town is being forced to do it."
By, by the state.
Yes, by the, I understand, I understand, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just, I want to understand if you could discuss a little bit more about the feasibility and maybe why the other areas were not as suitable as Bass Point. Because I think, I think Bass Point is the least resistant, because it's one person making a decision.
It's the least what?
Least resistance. It's least resistance.
That, that part of feasibility is whether, you know, whether you have to, you know, like, for example, some of these sites, you know, people have to be willing to sell their properties. If they require, you know, 50 people selling their properties, they're highly unfeasible. So the fact there was one owner was viewed as, you know, more feasible in some other ways. You know, it was also feasible because there's already multifamily there, so the community's used to having multifamily there. I understand there's traffic disruption due to the Coast Guard housing and all that, and other issues involving the Coast Guard housing. And, you know, we're highly sympathetic and consider the impact on the people. We thought in terms of the overall impact of, on the town, this was, was the best choice. And that, that's, that's where we are.
And my other question, I'll sit down, but I could talk all night. There's 25% of that five acres is built upon. Is it conceivable that those other 75%, the other 75% of that property could be built upon to comply with 3A? And this gentleman will give you the answer.
Yeah, yeah, so this is going to be a common refrain that we, that we come back to, is that there's a cap in the district that says you can only build 84 units in the entire district. There's 128 there right now, so it's at capacity. So you're not going to add any more units, there's not going to be any more traffic until they literally reduce by 44 units, just to get down to 84, and then even go beneath that in order to rebuild. So, the expectation is that there's going to be no change and that Nahat is going to get credit for the multifamily that you already have, and then you will continue to receive these grants with not having any impact. And if the owner decides that they do want to redevelop, they would, again, have to reduce the number of units to below the 128 that are there now in order to start reconstruction.
Can I just follow? If we're reducing from 128 to 84, isn't it counterintuitive to displace 128 people to support 84 more people? Isn't it counterintuitive? Wouldn't we better off building on a property that's not going to displace people?
Yeah, so there is a pathway where they could redevelop all 128, and in that pathway, have 25% affordable units that would then get you to 40B Safe Harbor, which is another one of the town's goals. I think the issue with trying to locate 84 units somewhere else in town is we would be having the same conversation, but about someone's neighborhood that they don't want to see changed, about a business district that you don't want to see changed. And so thinking about where to put this capacity that's going to be the most tolerable and have the least impact while still complying with the state's goals. By this process, we identified this one site, which again, has the benefit of being a single parcel.
Donna Levin, 49 Surf View Avenue. A couple of questions on the scoring, and then one more question after that. Not tall enough, sorry. On the scoring, there's a box for equity. Was that one of the 12? And all I see is zeros there, so I wondered what the criteria was and why it wasn't scored.
So, the reason, so equity is something the state, there were, there were a couple of the criteria where we didn't, didn't score them. But we wanted to make sure that in approaching what sites we looked at, we weren't looking, we weren't picking on an area. We wanted, regardless of demographics, if it has more expensive homes, whether they're businesses, whether they're less expensive homes, regardless of who lives in what area, we wanted to make sure, we viewed equity as saying we're treating everybody equally, and we are not, not hesitating to look at an area because somebody has a lot of influence over a mansion. And, and that's how we viewed equity. And so we said, given those criteria, we're not going to use, we're actually not going to use the equity criteria. But it was something we used in determining the sites and the sites we thought we should consider.
And then my other question was, you front-loaded, you doubled the scores for the three that you mentioned.
Right.
And one of those was not transit accessibility, which would seem to be in part what 3A is about.
That is, that is true, but. So, we do have bus stops in Nahat. I have rarely seen anybody on the bus. So, so, but we did consider, was it in walking distance to the bus and some, you know, and the reality is virtually nobody uses a bus in Nahat. And. Well, we know that's a point, and that's why, that was one of the reasons we went to the state and said, "We don't even use public transit, why don't, we're willing to give it up." And they said, "No, we need the affordable housing, I meant the housing, the multifamily housing, so." We, we, okay.
And one more question. I am for affordable housing, I'd like to see it here in Nahat. But, talking about the choice today being between us hurting the finances of Nahat or voting yes, it seems like giving us, and I understand the work you've gone through, but at this point, with 30 days till the deadline, I'm going to piggyback on the woman who said, you know, "Where is the plan B?" or "Where is the ranked voting?" Because it's, it seems like a false choice. Do this, or you're hurting the finances of Nahat.
Well, no, there's, there's more. It is true, we need to get to a yes vote, or we will be ineligible for critical grants. That is true, and it's important that the citizens know that. The other thing it's important for the citizens to know is, if we don't select, you know, make a 3A determination and determine a site, and as Nels said, any site you pick, everybody, you know, people are going to object to it. But if we do not comply, then the state can come in and they can overrule the local zoning and determine where and how many units and how high those units are. Because in the Milton case, the recent Milton case, the judge ruled, because Milton was non-compliant with 3A, that the state, if necessary, can appoint a master and he'll decide what meets the purposes of 3A. So that would be the state to, it would be out of our control. That could easily happen if we're unable to come to a decision. We had people look at this for a long time, we did the best job we could, we were not biased. Of the people who were most active on the issue, two of the three on the planning board live in the Bass Point area, and the most active selectman also lives in the Bass Point area. So there wasn't a bias towards Bass Point in the least, if anything, it was the opposite. And we discussed, all the issues you're bringing up, with the exception of Jody's issue, we discussed, which I think was boilerplate that we missed. So, we did the best we could, and that's what we're recommending, Bass Point.
Real quick, my name is Peter Crafts, I'm one of the 128 at Bass Point. And the point I want to make is, there's never been anything said about the people that live there. And I understand that you looked at other places, but I think that the, like, 128 people will be the most impacted by this. And, you know, can you give me, for the people that live where I live, basically a guarantee that it's going to be a year or two? You keep saying, you know, "Well, maybe it won't be, maybe it won't happen," but maybe it could. Can you say it's not going to happen in the next year or two?
I, no, I can't say that. What I can say is, nobody knows of developer interested in building multifamily, building 128 or 84 units in Nahat. The current owner of Bass Point is very happy with the rents he's receiving, and he's refurbishing some units and showing no indication he wants to make any change in terms of current units. So, from our vantage point, we did not, and I understand the concern of people who live there. If I was a renter there, I'd be very concerned too. But, we, we're being given credit for a multifamily zone, for multifamily units already in place. That's pretty non-disruptive. I understand there's potentially.
The 128 will be replaced, right? That's kind of insane.
If it, if it ever occurs, but what we're seeing over and over again is big project developers aren't interested in Nahat. There's no amenities.
So you're saying basically vote yes and trust that everything will work out, that six months we're not all packed up.
This is a question, time only, no debate, please.
I'm not dying, yes. And one more thing is, yeah, I said the guarantee. I don't know, I just, it's a great place to live, and I wouldn't want to be you guys, but I think it's important to think about the people that, at first, instead of the traffic, instead of it, it should be the people that we, be upfront with.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your comment. Okay, thank you.
Okay, this really is a question.
Okay.
As I understand it, the overlay.
Could you please state your name and address, I'm sorry?
Sorry, B Rogers, 44 Pearl Road. We're creating an overlay district. And I, it has a maximum number of units. I've heard the number 84, and I've heard the number 128. And if I understand, what that means is the 128 that are there, which are one-bedroom apartments.
Right.
Number, but would comply with the 3A requirement. If somebody, for some reason, said, "I want to get rid of what's now there," they would be limited to 84. be limited to 84?
No, let me explain. I appreciate it.
Or, yeah, that's unclear.
She's, okay, she's right. Well, okay, so, okay, she's right. All right.
Yeah, that's right. So they would be limited to 84 by right. So this is a requirement to have by-right housing. There was a comment made earlier that even with the by-right housing, that they would be able to supersede ConCom and not have to go to planning board. That's false. You still need those permits. You can't build in the floodplain. There is a site plan review period, even for by right. The site plan review guidance is in here. But it's by right. You have the right to build 84 units. There's also a provision in here that's a special permit for 128 units that would require more affordable housing. And the 128 is, of course, matching the current density of housing at Bass Point. Right now, the housing that's there currently was put there by special permit. And so this special permit provision would allow that recreation, but they would have to go through the same special permit process that happened in 1977.
Okay, so it wouldn't be automatic. Yep. So what I think I understood is right, that right now there is a building there with 128 units. If somebody decided to get rid of that building, of right, they could build only 84? And zoning, like setbacks and height restrictions, do apply?
Right.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
And with a special permit, they could build 128. With a special permit, with 25% affordable, also subject to 30 fees and all the zoning requirements.
Are those 84 units multifamily?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's more than 128 one-bedroom apartments, correct? Like, three, four, five people per multifamily, maybe 10?
Well, we don't.
Excuse me, you need to state your name and address.
Heather Quinn, 22 Breeze Hill Terrace. I do have two questions. First one, how can you seriously say there was public outreach about this? When no one attends the planning board meetings, nobody plans the selectman meetings, you have angry people, residents of our community in Bass Point, who are seeing extreme changes to what we've had as a beautiful, quiet neighborhood in Nahant for many years. Your public outreach must have died. And so what I'm looking for are leaders that bring people together, which I haven't seen in so long in Nahant. You know, I'm so sick of the divide.
Excuse me, but we need to stay on point.
I have one question. How does this celebrate the, I am for 3A, I have been the whole time, because I'm an affordable housing advocate, okay? How does this celebrate 3A when you keep saying, "Maybe they'll build, maybe they won't"? I want someone to build affordable housing in this house. I have children and I have aging parents, and they are being kicked out of here, okay? So how does this celebrate affordable housing, which Nahant desperately needs, Massachusetts desperately needs, and our country actually needs? Thank you.
My name is Jeff Lewis, 116...
No answer to either of those questions?
Well, that, my name is Jeff Lewis. I live in Chelmsford, North Nahant, Mass. And my question is, can somebody speak to advocate for passage of this, or is that allowed under the county rules?
Can you repeat that, please?
He wants to advocate for it.
Can I advocate for passage of these bylaws, or is that not...
Not yet. We're still in questions. If there are no more questions, we'll begin debate. So there was a gentleman behind you. Are you going to be asking a question, or do you want to start debate?
Question.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, what is 128 minus 84? Can anybody answer that question? It's 44. I'll answer my own question. I went to the meetings. These people did reach out to everybody. And to be honest with you, I've been a developer for 45 years. I feel for the people who live at Bass Point Apartments, wonderful woman over there, whatever. But they have nothing to worry about. There is no way that a developer...
Excuse me, but do you have a question?
That was my question.
Okay.
And I have a comment.
No, we're not taking comments right now. We need to only answer questions and clarifications, and then we'll go to debate. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Perella, 20 C. Breeze Lane, Bass Point. Just curious, in the couple of years that you've been researching this, what about the former Coast Guard housing that was vacant for so long? Did anybody consider that as maybe a good solution for affordable housing?
I cannot speak to the whole Coast Guard consideration of that, but those lots have been sold, so whatever mistake might have been made in that regard.
Right, but it was vacant for so long. Did you ever consider that site, the building?
We can't. We got...
Now you would join the planning, okay?
Yeah, we did not.
It's out of order. Town meeting in 2021 decided what was happening with the Coast Guard space. 3A came out after that vote, so we were already moving forward in one direction. Okay.
I'm going to...
Are there any more questions? I want to cut off questioning so we can get into debate.
Can I have a question? Do I have a motion?
No motions. Not yet. I know your motion, not yet, please. Just, that's it. I'm going to stop it. Mr. Graul, you're the last question, but...
Hello, my name is Kevin McCarthy. I live in 12 Winter Lane. My question is, we've heard a lot today about, of course, what could or couldn't happen. For instance, if 3A is passed, potentially the existing building could be taken down, a new building could be constructed at either 84 units with 10% affordable housing, or 128 units through special permit with 25% housing. My question is, without 3A, without this being an overlay district, is there anything preventing the present owner from doing this right now, tearing down and rebuilding?
No.
So this is something that could happen anyway?
No, well, they would need, they'd need to be multi, well, they're not, they're zoned special permit in a very specific way, so depending on what they wanted to do, I think it's zoned special permit with all one-bedroom units. So if he wanted to do that, he could do that.
So that's my point. It could. The owner presently could tear down the units and rebuild what he has again, displacing residents that are there during the construction period. Is that true?
Yes.
The president, without 3A even, this could happen?
Right.
Yes, but they are existing as illegal, non-conforming use in today's zoning. So it is an R2, single-family zone, 10,000 square feet. They can come to the planning board tomorrow with a plan to subdivide and create single-family homes.
Or they could, the present owner could destroy the building that's now in place, come back and seek, re-seek the special permits to build what's there again, 128 units. So 3A isn't really going to change that. The owner could do it now, or, so we're saying it might happen because 3A is enacted. It may or may not, but it could happen even without 3A. Is that correct?
That is correct. The current owner of Bass Point could tear it down and sell them all for single-family lots, and he might do that. I don't, but I don't think he's going to do that. I think it's far-fetched, but maybe.
Jody Graul, 65A Bass Point Road. Back to the article that is zoning change, Section 16.5 dimensional standards. It says minimum lot dimensions, five acres. And then it talks about 75 feet frontage, front yard, 75 feet, 25 feet, 10 feet. Is that five acres a misprint? Should it be 10,000 square feet, which is the R2 requirement?
No, the minimum lot area is five acres.
For what?
For as-of-right multifamily.
So Sheila just mentioned subdividing. So what are the dimensional standards for a lot that has been subdivided to be able to put a multifamily house on? It looks like it's five acres.
Yes, this is a great question, sir. So this is an overlay district. So right now, the owner still has the right to the underlying zoning, what we call the base zoning, which is single-family, which is most of the rest of Nahant. If the owner wants to use the overlay for multifamily, the minimum lot area is five acres. So there will only be, they can't subdivide and do two. It has to be one development at Bass Point.
I'm thoroughly confused. Is it, I'm just confused. If it said 10,000 square feet, I would understand that, because it's an R2 zone with the overlay. And I still don't understand the five acres. So if somebody puts in a multifamily compliant building or buildings, it's five acres and the frontage has to be 75 feet, I assume, on Bass Point Road, or if they build a road or whatever. But it just seems, it doesn't fit. Five acres as a minimum lot dimensions just doesn't seem to fit.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Before we start debate, I think we have an amendment, and this is, is this the amendment to change the verbiage? Yes. So I'm assuming, because it's being presented by the planning board, it's a friendly amendment.
Yes, thank you. Sheila Hamilton, 17 Kenny Ave, Chairman of the Planning Board. I move that the language of mixed use be stricken from Section 16 as listed. Page nine, 16.7, number one, delete and mixed use. Page 10, 16.7, number three, A, delete whole sentence, remove A and renumber ABCD. Okay? Page 10, 16.7, number four, delete and mixed use. Page 11, 16.7, number five, C, delete or mixed use. Page 11, 16.8, number two, delete and mixed use. Page 12, 16.9, number one, delete or, by or mixed use, or any other locations it may be found in this section.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do we have any debate on the amendment? Just the amendment on the verbiage change? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to take, we don't have our clickers, so...
I bet a voice vote.
Yep. We're going to let our town clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, the power is back on, the internet is back on. So if you have a blue wristband, you can get a clicker, okay? Can you hit that thing? All right, just a second.
All right. For the amendment, we're going to do just a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Before we get into debate, I would like to take a five-minute recess so that we can hand out clickers.
Yes.
All right. We're not going to use the clickers. We're going, I've decided that we're going to do a voice vote, a stand vote, and a paper vote.
I think it's very clear from the questions that were asked and the comments that this is a highly contentious issue, and I am going to request that we, if we don't use the clickers, that we, I know it takes a long time...
Once we go through a voice, excuse me...
When we get to a vote on the final article, that we do it by paper ballot to keep it confidential.
Excuse me. We're going, I'm explaining, it's my prerogative. We will do a voice vote. If we don't feel comfortable with a voice vote after a voice vote, we can do a standing vote. And if we're not comfortable with that, seven members of the audience can stand up and request a paper vote. That's the process. That's how it's spelled out in my little Bible here. So we have a motion on the floor, and I am opening it to debate. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and let the games begin.
Scott Kenworthy, 21 Range Road. Just a point I was trying to make earlier was, you know, what's 128 minus 84? And I answered my own question, was 44. Being a developer for, you know, I'm not the biggest developer, the greatest developer, the smartest guy, but I do understand budgets and common sense. And I can tell you that I understand the concerns of the renters at the Bass Point Apartments. I don't think they have anything to worry about. Why would a developer who has 128 units, why would they reduce themselves down another 44 units to 84 units? What bank would go for that type of proposal? None. Who would take something that was built 40 years ago and pay today's prices? Does anybody know what has happened with prices in construction the past six, seven years? They've doubled. So it's not going to happen. And I went to this meeting, somebody stood up here and said that nobody was allowed to come to the meetings or something. You had the same right that I did. I showed up at the meeting, there was only a handful of people. Could it have been marketed a little bit better? Possibly. But everybody had that opportunity to show up, and you didn't show up. So I listened to everybody. I sat there and listened to everybody, and I can tell you, I've been to a lot of board meetings. I'm not the greatest speaker, but I just feel compelled to come up here. Nell's, Nell's did one hell of a job. This guy's a great consultant. He's worth every penny you paid him. Because to, I wouldn't even think of going over to those apartments and do that as an overlay. And would that be acceptable to the state? We are so blessed that we actually have that there and that you're able to overlay this. Nobody's going to do any building there. There's a thing in real estate called the status quo, and what this does is this ensures the status quo. Why? Because the numbers don't lie. They're not even close. No developer in their right mind would knock down 128 units to build 84. It's common sense. We could have a first-grade class about this, and the kids would understand. So there is paranoia involved with people who live over there. I don't think you have anything to worry about. You have nothing to worry about. And I think the board did do a great job. And somebody said, "Why don't they do it into, you know, two different projects and break it up?" Well, it's tough enough with just one. You're lucky that you had those five acres. You're lucky that you had those units that had exceeded the 84 and that were able to use this. And don't think it's going to be the last time that the state of Massachusetts, the problem isn't these people who've worked their butt off, the problem is the state. And you never know what they're going to throw at you. And, you know, I thought, jeez, I saw, I looked at the bus going by every day, and I see it a lot empty, but there's people who really need it, and those people, we've got to preserve that for them. And I thought, jeez, maybe we could just not have the bus service. But it entails a lot more. The causeway, things that we can't get federal funds from, got to come through the state, all this stuff. I just built a 70-foot riprap wall at my house in May, and it cost me $300,000. So I know about dealing with oceanfront stuff. We need this, we need to comply. And if we don't, we're idiots, because we're just going to be forced to comply. So I think everything worked out well. I think everybody's overly concerned about nothing. That's all I have. That's all I have.
My name is Bill Foster, 28 Highland Avenue. I would like to state my position first and then give three points. My position is, this is the lesser of the evils. Hold on those and vote for it. The board and the people that we have elected have done a good job. My first point is, don't fight history. It's coming. If it, if it isn't 3A, it was 40B and the cherry sheet before that, and there'll be more. As Scott said, this is the beginning. We have a housing crisis, we have a population crisis, and the best we can do, I think, is make the best of a bad situation. My first point, okay? We have tried to oppose history a couple times in this town. It's fruitless. The state can change the law anytime they want, make a new law. Just look around some of the other towns, what's happening to them. In fact, that's a good point to quit. Look around what's happening to other points. I concede my time to anybody who needs it.
Jody Grawl, 65A Bass Point Road. For what it's worth, I'd like to correct a lot of things that have been said about the special permit that is in effect right now for the Bass Point Apartments. It's been referred multiple times as multifamily units, 128 multifamily units. With the help of the clerk, I actually got the special permit, and I read it. The special permit is actually, if you can believe this, a motel complex of 128 two-room efficiency apartments in seven buildings. What someone's gonna make of that to try to change the special permit into multifamily housing, good luck. But it's not currently multifamily units as it's being used in the present article. The other point I wanted to make, and I guess it's a question I didn't wanna ask, three questions in the question session, is it was stated tonight that the plan has been approved by the state. I would like to know when the plan was approved by the state, and is it in writing?
It was submitted to the state. We worked collaboratively with the state, and they pre-approved the map.
In, in writing?
In, in an email. It's not, it's not final formal approval. After we approve it, there's final formal approval. But, but we, what, my point was that they accepted the map, and they're, we've worked collaboratively with them the whole time, and they accept what we've done, and Nels is an expert on what the state accepts and doesn't accept. It may be they disapprove, but all indications are that we've got it right, and that they will approve following passage by the town.
Okay. That doesn't, I'm, I'm sorry, but.
I'm telling you.
There's a, there's a procedure for pre-adoption in which your proposed article can be submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Unfortunately, they will not look at, well, unfortunately, they take 90 days to review it. They will then issue a letter with feedback to the community if there's any issues with it, before it goes to the legislative body. In the town of Nahann, this is the legislative body. My guess is it just couldn't be done with the 90-day advance in order to get it approved at town meeting by December 31st. So, this is certainly not a criticism for not following that procedure. But what my fear is, is I think the particular draft or proposed article, proposed zoning has some problems. One problem is, I think, a motel complex of 128 two-room efficiency apartments in seven buildings is a non-conforming use of an R2 residential zone. And I've seen some references to not allowing a 3A overlay on a lot that's non-conforming. I don't know, maybe, maybe it's okay, I don't know, but that was one of my concerns. My other concern is that the Bass Point Apartments are presently on a flood zone overlay. So, we're putting an overlay on an overlay on an R2 that has a special permit. Good luck for anyone to do anything, because all it takes is for somebody to, you know, either raise, it, it, it's just, zoning is complicated, the planning board knows that. But realize what we're doing with this particular lot would be much simpler if it was property that didn't have a special permit, didn't have a flood zone area, but we probably don't have it in Nahann. It's, but the state doesn't understand that. You went to them, you tried to explain it to them. I'm sure nobody at the state said, whoa, let me take a look at your town GIS map. Oh, here's a spot, this'll work. Well, guess what? It won't. Well, here's another spot. Now, that won't work either. So, yeah, we're between rock and a hard place, but I'm concerned particularly on this lot because that's what was chosen, because it has a special permit, it has an existing overlay, and it complicates the matter if the state does not approve it. That's why I asked. Do they approve it in writing? Because if they renege and say, oh gee, we didn't know about, it was a motel complex of 128 apartments, that, that makes a difference, so, and you may have to start all over again. Thank you.
I'm gonna try to answer a couple of those questions. The first, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, there was a slight error on my part, and that was only that we got a prior approval from the Attorney General's office, and we got approval through the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. And just so you know, they're the ones who paid for our consultant. The town of Nahann did not spend any money on the consultant. It was a gift to the planning board. So, so we were happy to receive, receive that. We didn't get a bill. We don't even know what it cost. And that is thankfully to Nels, Nelson, who's, has been with us for about six months now. I did send everything in to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities as emails and attachments, but not through their portal. Their portal was a little difficult to try to maneuver and negotiate, and every time I went in, I tried to save, and then I couldn't get back to it. So, it has been sent in, but in the meantime, I did get an email back that said, based upon all of the Excel files and sheets and everything that was the compliance model, the town meeting, this town meeting, our current zoning, they will have the opportunity to review it, but they, in a quick glance, said, it looks good. We don't see a problem. So, I'm hoping that's true.
Moderator, could I just ask two questions?
It's my turn, Joe. You gotta give that to one of you.
You, you get one chance to speak, but I, is it a rebuttal question, or?
It's a clarification of what was sent in to the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities since they are the agency that must approve what we voted.
So, you're asking if that was sent, if that's who she sent it to?
No, I, I want to ask if it was sent.
I said, I sent in an email, not through the portal until Monday. Okay? So, I sent the compliance model, I sent our current zoning bylaw, I sent today's special town meeting bylaw, I sent our town zoning map and the proposed zoning map, and those were the requirements.
Can I ask one question?
One question. One question.
Did you submit the special permit that presently exists on that lot?
No.
It's my turn?
Hi. Ken.
Again, just that, the gentleman had several points, I just wanna clarify, because this is very complicated. The existing special permit and the non-conformity does not matter at all. The existing use of the site is not relevant to having the capacity to build multifamily. The special permit talks about motel-style units. It's irrelevant for the purpose of establishing capacity. I've also heard from a couple of the commenters, a little bit of confusion about the term multifamily. What I think people might understand is that you can have multiple families in a unit. That's not correct. It is the same type, or same allowable type of unit that's in Bass Point currently, which is a housing unit. So, the term multifamily means you can have multiple housing units on the lot as opposed to a, a single family or a two-family. It's just saying there's many units, not that you can have many families in the unit. So, that's, that's a good clarification. And then, the, the point about the flood, I just wanna address very quickly. Obviously, the state doesn't want to have the multifamily capacity be in flood zones, and so they put out a map of all the areas that are excluded where you can't have your 3A MBTA compliant zones. Part of the Bass Point District is in the flood zone, but there are 5.27 acres that are developable according to the state, and therefore, we're able to put the capacity for 84 units on the developable part of Bass Point.
Okay. Karen Lospinato, 34 Bass Point Road. I have a question and a comment. You talk about 84 units, and you're insisting that the scenario would be 84 apartments as opposed to 40 two-family houses. Is that not possible to happen, that they would put two-family homes? That's a big parcel of land. Is that something that can happen, like what happened with the military housing? Yes or no? Can that happen?
Nels?
Yeah, so, they can have 84 units on that site if they meet the dimensional standards.
So, you could have two-family home that meets those dimensional standards. You could have 30 of them. You could have a gigantic housing development like you had, have at the military housing. Okay? So, my, my point is, not only does this affect the Bass Point area for traffic, number one, it affects Castle Road, which is already a Speedway, it affects Flash Road, Gardner Road, Fox Hill Road, Bass Point Road, Nahann Road between Castle and Spring. It's the whole area as you enter and go on to Castle Road. And my other comment is, how in God's name is the school going to handle the potential of all of these families, let alone the cars, as well as fire and ambulance? That's my point. Thanks.
I, I would, I would just reiterate, it's impossible to add more units than there are currently there today.
Jeff Lewis, 6 Ellsworth Road, Nahann, Mass. I get up this morning, and I wanted to put down on paper why I am advocating for the adoption of this, these bylaws. Tonight, we are here to debate and pass the third part of our four-part housing plan. The first part was to regulate short-term rentals. We did that 18 months ago because a lot of housing units were being turned into short-term rentals, and we wanted to stop the damage, and it's been regulated. Next, we crafted and passed it, passed our ADU bylaw for single-family dwellings. This also was to develop for single-family units, which there are a lot in Nahann, is units that can be used to pass houses on to their kids. Tonight, we put forth the MBTA 3A bylaw for multifamily dwellings. This piece protects Nahann from costly lawsuits, loss of revenue, and opens the door for new and untapped revenue sources that become available to Nahann so that we can proceed with the fourth and the final piece of our housing plan. The Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. After tonight's bylaws are passed, people in this room will go out and they'll start a process called discovery to find out whether the Affordable Housing Trust can be used in this town. My fear is, if we give in to fear and we don't pass this piece of the law, then there won't be money to sit back and go toward the Affordable Trust. So, I'm asking for everybody here with calm heads to vote for these bylaws. Thank you.
Bonnie Budrick, 80 Flash Road.
Closer, please.
Bonnie Budrick, 80 Flash Road. This question is for Peter and Diane. What's the protocol to change these votes to a paper ballot and maybe a Tuesday?
I, I, it's at my discretion. In our time, town meeting time book, which we are bound to by our bylaws, I'm calling for a voice vote, and if it's difficult to determine with a voice vote, then I'll go to a standing vote, and after a standing vote, if, if we are still, as a group, not comfortable, then seven voters can stand up and petition to have a paper ballot.
No, I've heard all that before, thank you, but I mean going forward, voting on a paper ballot on a Tuesday, like from 8 o'clock to 8 o'clock.
Oh, 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 you mean putting it on a ballot question, on an actual election?
So, everybody can vote. I mean, because, um, nobody really wants to be here at this time.
We, we, we regulate by town meeting. I don't know the process to put it on a ballot, for a ballot question, maybe, yeah. She, go ahead.
Hi, Allison Nieto, I'm the town administrator. So, by this 3A MBTA law, it has to be approved by the legislative body, and the legislative body for the town is town meeting. It's you guys as the residents, so, this, this vote has to be taken at a town meeting.
But, oh, so, you couldn't just have a town meeting and then vote on it the following Tuesday?
No. It has to be done at, at town meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Patricia Wagner, 15 Breezy Hill Terrace. This is going back to Mr. Grawl's question. When did the location, that's Article 2, Appendix 1, When did the location, that's Article 2, Appendix 1, when was that submitted and approved by the state? The town councils say that we can't change that location to the one that's on the drawings, the proposed location at the Ward Bath House, the five acres that could be there, which meet the compliance in intent of 3A. Intent of 3A is that you walk from a bus station or a commuter rail station, and if you locate it, this zoning is supposed to be located within half a mile of that transportation. The causeway is cut off by water, flooding, snow, a disaster at the roadway. The lineway is now going to be reduced because of the housing that they've added near the General Edwards Bridge. They're taking a whole lane out, and Nahant will be impacted, because our sewer pipes run from the sewer plant all the way down the lineway, which will be the one open lane. When that breaks down, there'll be one lane to get home from Riviera to Nahant. The bike lane, I think, is also our sewer pipes, so when that gets damaged, Nahant will be paying for that. Now, the question is, the location for this, if it's just complying with 3A, the compliance is, they need an answer by December, that we're willing to assign a space. Why can't we assign the right-hand corner of the drive that was proposed, but wasn't voted on a month ago, or whatever? That location, it's the Ward Bath House, named after Mr. Ward, a Nahant resident, the Carney DCR property, which is a lease, is controlled by the state. We can't, we can't even force, the police can't override the state police on getting people into town in a disaster.
So, I'm gonna stop you right there. I'm gonna stop you right there, and essentially, our town bylaws basically tell us that we have to notice all of the voters in town. Our voters have been noticed that we are voting on the Bass Point property. Therefore, we cannot change the property. As far as the other, you know, the reasons not being able to use that, I would put that to the planning board, but as far as this voting body is concerned, we have noticed our community, our voters, on voting on the Bass Point property. That's what we have to do tonight. We cannot sit here and say, "Well, we're gonna debate whether we're gonna use this, the country club, or anywhere else." We noticed on Bass Point, therefore, we have to vote on it.
But was it, what was the date that the Bass Point property was chosen? Was it after the meeting, where the members of the planning board took a vote and did that little chart that's at the end of the book? Was that, when was the state notified? Mr. Brawl asked the question. What date was the state notified that we chose, that we didn't choose, that the board chose the Sebree's Lane Realty Trust property for this bylaw? What was the date they were notified?
September the 8th.
Thank you.
And I want to speak on the Ward Bath House. That is exempt for two reasons. It's owned by the Commonwealth, so it's government-owned, and they've already automatically exempted all government property, and then all flood-zoned properties, and that's in the flood zone.
But the land is Nahant.
It is in Nahant, but it's owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The building is owned by the Commonwealth.
Well, as far as I know, the land is.
A leasehold property is the ownership, which is why we're getting penalized, because they're saying that the beach, to the low watermark, okay, all the beaches are Nahant's measurements. So, we're getting penalized for having a beach and a causeway that we can't control, that are not under our, you know. So, the thing is, that that is...
That's outside of the discussion.
I know, but...
Yeah, okay, all right.
The state's controlling us, and we, our hands are tied for that, unfortunately.
So, I vote, I vote encourage all of you to do no, because there's blackmail on part of the state, and it's gonna cost more money by the time this is finished than whatever you lose, a million dollars in some sort of grant. It's gonna be an absolute disaster in Nahant.
Pete Rogers, 44 Pearl Road. And I'm gonna say that I, I, there's been a lot of concern about increased traffic and burden and so on, but my understanding, based on the response I got to my question, is that the maximum number of units, that is to say apartments, the maximum number of apartments is what's there now, 128. And if someone, for reasons that I can't understand, decided that they wanted to tear down what's there now, and rebuild something else, and displace people, which I hope will never happen, that as of their right, they could build 84 units. So, the, what I'm hearing is that the concerns about a burden on tra, increased traffic, increased, you know, burden on the town and stuff like that, is, it is not justified by the fact that the number of units that are there now couldn't be increased, and if somebody rebuilt, they would at most likely be decreased. And from what I understand, and please confirm, the building which is there now does meet the state's 3A requirement. Even though they're one-bedroom apartments, they still would comply with the 3A requirement.
That's correct. Was that a question?
Well, I, that was, that's my understanding, is that...
That's correct.
That the Bass Point apartments that are there now are, that's the most number of units that could be on that land, and that the building that is there now, in fact, complies with the requirements of the state. I mean, I don't like being blackmailed by the state either, but given that it's a requirement, it does meet that requirement, and more units cannot be constructed.
345 Nahant Road, Rebecca Flucker, and I don't know if that's the right term, but I would like to ask the question. Is that...
Call the question.
Call the question.
We have a, we have a motion to call. So, we're gonna take a voice vote, majority. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Wow, two unanimous in one night. So, the question has been called. Now, we're gonna vote on the main motion.
And we can't request a paper ballot?
Not at this point. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, sure, we'll read it as amended.
All right. My encore performance. I move that Nahant add a new section, Section 16, Multifamily Overlay District, to its existing zoning bylaw, as printed in the report and recommendation of the Advisory and Finance Committee on pages 7 through 13. And I guess I would note, there was a friendly amendment to that, changing some of the language that passed earlier.
Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Point of order.
Sure.
The chair of the FinCon just read an article, and you called for a vote on the article with absolutely no chance to debate.
We've been debating for the last hour on that.
That was on Article 1, not on Article 2.
He just read Article 1. He reread Article 1 at the request of the floor.
Article 1. I move that Nahant add a new section, Section 16, Multifamily Overlay District.
I apologize, the hearing aids didn't...
I believe the ayes have it. Oh, sorry, Diane?
We're not happy with that voice vote.
Question the vote?
Thank you.
We've questioned the vote.
Second. Third.
We're gonna do a stand-up vote now. All those in favor, stand up. If you're in the back of the room, and you don't have a chair, kind of squat down, so we don't, you know. Right. All right, all the yeses, please sit down. All the noes, stand up. The ayes definitely have it.
Aye.
The ayes definitely have it. So, the motion passes. Mr. Bell, Article 2.
I move that Nahant amend its zoning map to reflect the new multifamily overlay district as shown in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee on page 15.
Can you repeat?
Yeah, please repeat that.
Okay. I move that Nahant amend its zoning map to reflect the new multifamily overlay district as shown in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee on page 15.
Seconded by Ms. Warren. And we do have the A map up here. Does the planning board have any comments?
The parcel in, outlined in yellow, is the Bass Point Apartment, map 19, Lot 54. The purple is excluded area, that is required by the state. So, the area in green is just about 5.25 acres, and that is the requirement for our zoning bylaw.
We are on Article 2 now?
We are on Article 2 now.
Okay. I guess for the planning board, in a clarification, I believe the entire Bass Point property is in a VE zone, and it's covered by the Nahant overlay for flood planning. I thought I heard a mention when we were talking about the Ward Bath House area. Granted, it's public land, and it's exempt, but whether 3A multifamily housing can be built on land that's in the flood zone, which I think Bass Point Apartments is in a VE zone with 18 foot. If you look in Nahant zoning, it defines where the overlay is, and it says VE zones. So, my question is, can the multifamily district be in a VE zone, if indeed, all of Bass Point is in a VE zone?
Yeah, you'd have to answer that.
Okay, so, the parcel, the overlay district overlaps completely with the one parcel that is Bass Point, which is the black line. This map is meant to demonstrate that within the black line, within that parcel, there is enough area to be compliant with the requirements of MBTA communities, which is to have a district of at least five acres of developable land. This excluded area in purple was created by the state to show areas that they deem to be excluded. There's enough upland area, that's 5.27 acres, to be compliant. There is enough developable land to be compliant.
It may be developable by the state, but the town's overlay bylaw says it can't. And I see Sheila shaking her head.
Go ahead, yeah, no, we need to rebut.
And that is absolutely true. They ignored any of our laws. We're having to meet the state's laws and their requirements. And they are using, I think, information that might be two years old, because I've been trying to make some changes. That's why it's been difficult, and why I finally didn't get what I needed to get into the state in the first place, because they're just using old information, and that's what they're using. And that's what they're using from everybody.
So, it can't go there, right?
No, that's why it's there. That's why it's there, and you don't see the flood zone, because the state is using...
Excuse me, Jody. You've been at the mic more than anybody here tonight. We have somebody in line.
Can I make a motion to vote and end debate?
To call the question?
Yes, call the question.
Yes. So, we have a motion to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. We're going to the main motion. Do we need it to be read again?
No.
Okay.
I didn't care if seconded.
What's that?
I didn't care if seconded.
Yeah, Ms. Warren seconded it. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you all for coming, and with the business of this meeting ended, with no more business to be had, I dissolve this meeting.